All right, I might have been muted for all of that. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, Bonnie. Obviously, we're going to want to talk about this again. We will sort out the appropriate time for that. At this point, we're going to move on to our action items. The first action item is the Greenwich Together Youth Survey. Let me just pull that up. I'll go ahead and make the motion to move this along. I move that we approve the plan to administer the Greenwich Together Youth Survey to approximately fifty percent of the students in grades seven through twelve in the Greenwich Public Schools. Is there a second for that motion? Ms. Stowe, thank you. All right. I believe Ms. Ford, you're presenting the item.
Thank you. As you may recall, two years ago, I came to you and asked for your support for us to participate in the survey, the townwide developmental asset survey, which you approved. The results from that were used to apply for a drug-free school grant for the town of Greenwich. One of the requirements of that grant, which we did receive, was that we re-administer the youth survey every two years. So this is the two-year re-administration of the youth survey. Peter was right. In order not to skew the results, we only survey approximately fifty percent of the students in grades seven through twelve. The survey is a little bit shorter this time. There are about thirty-nine, I think there are thirty-nine questions. It would be administered again through grades seven through twelve. What we did last year was either pick a particular class or a particular time to make sure that we get a representative of the student population and students are given the opportunity to opt out if their parents do not want them to participate in the survey. So if you have any questions?
Mary, just to add to that, this survey is instrumental in the town being able to seek grant money. Is that correct?
It's part of the grant. We received the grant, and one of the requirements of the grant is that we re-administer the survey, but then we can use the survey results to reapply for another round of the grant. And it's administered through Greenwich Together, which is the townwide council that is focusing on substance abuse prevention and healthy choices.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Makes tons of sense. Let's call the question.
All right, well, I see Mr. Share's hand and...
I'm just asking, Peter, why, why do, why do we need to take action? I mean, this, didn't we already approve this and they're doing it?
We approved earlier this year the parent survey. This is the companion student survey.
Oh, okay, that was the question I asked last. Okay, fine.
Exactly.
I got it. I got it. All good. Yeah.
All right, so with that, I'm going to call the question to approve administering the survey to fifty percent of our Midland High Schoolers. Bernstein is a yes, Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Share?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the next one is funky. Hang on, let me call up the cover sheet and I just make these motions, keep this moving. This is the about twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two capital budget side. I'm going to move that we approve to shift six-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-five dollars from the North Street School project to cover cybersecurity. Is there a second for that?
I have a second. Go ahead, Joe. Take Joe.
Mr. Kelly, all right. Mr. O'Keefe, maybe you can explain to us what you're seeking to accomplish here.
Okay, let me give everybody a little background here. So as you all know, in December, the Board of Ed approved the capital request for twenty-one-twenty-two at thirty-three-point-five million, which was reduced from the superintendent's request for two items, two-point-three for CMS field improvement project and two-point-one related to the COSCOH HVAC cost adjustment based on the recent bid process. Also, since then, the COSCOH interim has been approved at one-four-seven-seven. That was approved this week, so with that, the request, the request would be adjusted down by that one-point-four-seven-seven from thirty-three-five to thirty-two-point-one. So that's a little bit of history. Recently, in a discussion with Ben Branyan at the town, we learned that the town IT department had not requested cybersecurity funds for the Board of Ed, as was done in the prior year. Therefore, we would need to increase a line item for cybersecurity in the amount of six-fourty-seven-eight-oh-five. And the suggestion, the proposal for your consideration is to take that money out of North Street HVAC, which at three-point-six-nine million was of the same vintage as the COSCOH HVAC number at three-five-four-six prior to getting the bid number of one-four-seven-seven. So it's been discussed with Dan. He's okay with it. And so that's the proposal to fund the cybersecurity, which was not included in the original request by shifting funds from North Street HVAC.
Sean, just to clarify, make sure we understand this. Basically, the number that was in there for North Street, we believe now, based on the actual numbers for COSCOH, is higher than it needs to be, so shifting this money would not affect the North Street HVAC project.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kowalski, I see your hand.
So Sean, didn't we know the exact, the actual numbers for COSCOH at our last meeting?
Yes, we did. We did know. It was bid at one-four-seven-seven, and that's the amount of the interim request, which was approved this week. So given that it's been approved, we now can remove that one-four-seven-seven from our capital request for twenty-one-twenty-two.
Understood. So if we knew COSCOH's bid was at one-four-seven-seven and it was the same vintage as, as your words, the same vintage as North Street, why did we ask for three-point-seven-nine-zero million?
What was originally requested for COSCOH was three-point-five-four-six.
Right, but my point is, we knew that that number was wrong a month ago.
Because we, it's a unique situation. We're, we are, we are thinking that the number is going to be similarly high. So, I mean, we have not yet bid North Street, so we don't know for sure.
So where did we get the three-point-seven from? Where's that number from?
Dan is here. He can chime in, but I believe it's from the master plan.
It's a combination from the, the number that was in the master plan as well as our own review of what's there, input from one of our consulting engineers.
So if I look at the master plan and I look at just looking for the North Street one. I think it's on the next page. So, Dan, what page is that in, in the master plan? I have it up. Oh, here, I may have found it. So for the HVAC, it's hard to say. For North Street, I actually have, in the master plan, is two-point-eight. It's on page thirteen. So I'm just curious where we got that three-point-seven number.
You're looking at the master plan from twenty-seventeen?
I'm looking at the master plan. Yes, I believe that's the date. It's a hundred-and-eighty-two-page document. And I don't believe it was twenty-seventeen. I believe it was done and finalized in twenty-nineteen. So my, look, my point is here that I don't understand where we got the three-seven number from, and if we knew back and like, I don't, I don't disagree that we should put money to the cybersecurity. I think that that's important. I think there was just recently an email that went out about being photobombed or Zoom bombed, as they call it. I, I think the fact that we are, our children are online and on a line, online every day is all the more reason why we need to up our cybersecurity. And I've noticed that in the past, a couple of our emails have been hacked. So, yes, that needs to be accounted for. I'm just, I just don't understand the math and the information that's being given to the board. Because if we're looking at the, the master facilities plan, the number there is two-eight. The number that got approved at the last meeting for North Street is, what, I think it's three-seven. Not sure where that came from, where the backup is to that, and all of a sudden, we're okay taking almost six, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars away from that. But we still think we're going to be okay because of the numbers from COSCOH, which we knew back at last month. Not sure why we put in three-point-seven and voted on that when it really should have been the COSCOH numbers. I'm just, I want to understand the sequence of events, and I'm just, the math is a little fuzzy to me, and it doesn't make sense.
Karen, can I just interject? Because we talked about this at the Budget Committee, and we talked about this at the, I thought we talked about this at the board meeting last month when we voted, because we did talk about lowering the North Street number overall. But Sean didn't have data or any hard information to go on to reduce the number from the proposed three-point-seven and change. So we did discuss it definitely in the Budget Committee, and I thought, we talked about it at the board meeting last month and said he was going to, we were hoping that we'd have more information by the time it got in front of the BET. But that, as they looked at the process of fixing it, it wasn't necessarily identical to COSCOH in terms of the system. So we couldn't make the same assumption about the cost reduction.
So what's happened in the last month that we can now make that same assumption for the cost reduction?
That, ask Sean.
No, I know. I'm sorry. I wasn't posing that question to you.
I think you hit the nail on the head. Assumptions are made. It's not a, it's not a true science. We do not have estimates for North Street yet. And those numbers were based on, yes, they were, they were based on numbers that were provided in the master plan, which is, as we described in the other meetings, the master plan was based on KGND's review of the buildings. It's, it's a, it's a master plan. They're, they're budgetary numbers. They're, they're not really estimates. Their numbers were based on square footages, and those are the numbers that are put together with their assumptions, not knowing exactly what type of systems we're going to be put in, not knowing if technology had changed, not knowing what ancillary finishes were going to be damaged. You know, what, what field conditions. So these are, it's a, it's a jumping off point, and I think that was made pretty clear at the last meeting. Now, since then, we've had the situation at COSCOH where we looked at, instead of going in and going the normal route with having an engineer come in, review the entire building, design a new system, put the bit, put it out for bid. We needed to expedite the project, and we went with what's called a design build. Basically, we cut out the middleman, the engineer, and we put the project out to bid as a design build, meaning we went to mechanical contractors that had their own engineering department. And that was put out for bid, and we have a very reputable organization who supplied the apparent loan bid. And the system that they proposed came in much less than the budget number of, I'm sorry, I don't have it in front of me, of three-six, mainly because some of the existing parts of the system were going to be used, meaning some of the existing duct work was going to be used, meaning that if the duck were to have to be replaced, there's savings in that component, as well as if there had any damages to the ancillary finishes, like ceilings and walls. So that's a good reason why there was a cost savings there. And we can assume a cost savings of similar percentages for North Street, although it's a totally different type of building, totally different type of system. So there's just some general assumptions that are, that are made. And the biggest factor is, we're going to be cutting out, if we go that route, we'll be cutting out the engineer's component, the, the, the design of it.
So we don't know for sure.
Absolutely not. We haven't, we haven't...
We could end up coming back here and asking for an interim relief from the BET because we're up short on our HVAC because we've moved six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars over.
Anything's possible. We could get out there and open walls and find, you know, mold. I don't think that's, I don't think that's going to be an issue. I'm fairly confident that using the money for a different line item is is acceptable. I think there's a cost savings. I don't even want to say a cost savings. I think there's a a differential in the way we perceive the project in the beginning, or the way KGND perceived it versus the way that we're looking at it now.
Okay, I'm just, the point I'm trying to make here is that I'm just, I'm just concerned about the numbers that are being given to and put in front of the board at times that we're voting on without the necessary backup. Where I'm, I'm looking at the master plan, and it says North Street's HVAC is two-point-eight. We've now approved it for three-point-seven, which is nine-hundred-thousand dollars more. And now we're saying it doesn't need it because it's likely going to be over, and we should be fined by giving six-hundred-and-fifty to cybersecurity. I just think that if the board is expected to vote on numbers and we need to have the accurate backup and support behind the, what's going into this, rather than just guesses. I realize that, you know, at, it, it much, much of this is, is looking at, you know, our best estimate. But what it sounds to me is that we're just, we're just throwing out numbers. I just don't understand this. And I think it's very difficult for, for the board to come back and, and vote on these types of things when it looks like, well, wait a second. A month ago, we voted for three-point-seven, and now we're okay taking six-hundred-and-fifty from it. But that's okay. We should be fine. I just, I'm uncomfortable on that kind of analysis.
All right, Mr. Share and Mr. Kelly?
I have a question and then a real concern I want to raise. Sean, we appropriated money for cybersecurity last year. Are, are we on track to spend all that this year?
I don't have that in front of me. I can, I can, I can give you an answer first thing in the morning.
I can, I can answer that. I can answer that question.
I'm wondering if we're asking for money.
Peter, hang on. We've got Mike Ting, and he says he can answer, so let's let him do that.
Hi, this is Michael Ting. Yes, we are on track to spend out one-hundred percent of the cybersecurity funding for this year.
Fine. So we're going to spend six-hundred thousand, because I think our number was six-hundred thousand roughly?
It was, it was a little less. It was, it was in the fives. It was like five-sixty, five-seventy.
And so we're going to spend all that, right?
Yes.
Okay. I wasn't concerned coming into this meeting necessarily about this, but now that I hear it, I'm, I'm really concerned. This is the second meeting in a row where someone in the administration has repudiated the master plan. And guys, I, I don't know how many of you have actually read the master plan, but this master plan was overseen by Laura Erickson from the board. And if you know Laura Erickson, she knows what she's doing. And Dan, you were, you were on this project when it happened. Now, Tony Jones wasn't, and Sean weren't, but we paid hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars. We reviewed RFPs and selected KGND, not based on an architect, very specifically in the scope of work of that project was an assessment of all of these systems by engineers. They were hired specifically for this. The same kind of people that we would then hire to do design for us on specific projects. And now, I mean, there's no other way to say this. It has just been said again that those numbers are not valid. Now I heard tonight, because the methodology of assessing them wasn't, and estimating wasn't sound. I have to tell you, we've gone out there as a board and bantered this thing about as the level of investment that we need in schools, priorities and expectations. And, you know, I would not be surprised if a number from KGND came out at five million and it came in at twenty percent less. Okay, COSCOH, guys, it's at sixty percent less than the estimate. So we have a really substantial credibility problem. Because now we're sitting, we're hanging all these capital, many of these capital proposals we're making off the master plan. We're saying the numbers in there are not valid, like, by big percentages, huge percentages. The same got said last time about ADA. Someone said, I don't even know what's in there. This is not a good place for us to be. And I, I'm really concerned on North Street because, look, I'm glad we across the district instead of, you know, these giant mega projects for a single school. And I think everybody knows that HVAC and air quality is a much more important issue than it's ever been vis a vis COVID. So I'm glad we're focused on it. But I will tell you, I come away from this conversation very nervous that we've requested money. And if we had just requested it as a pot, that might be one thing. But we've requested very specific money for a very specific school. And here we are thirty days later, cutting that number by twenty percent to fund something else. But we don't even know if that's a good number. We're guessing that it might turn out like COSCOH. And Dan, you're an expert at this. I hope you're right. But this is no way to run the railroad with these kinds of numbers flying around and us repudiating a, the numbers in a plan that we have relied on. Joe Kelly asked a very important question at the last meeting on ADA. How did this happen? How did I be on a board twelve years and not take care of ADA? You want to know why, Joe? Because I rely on the staff to tell us stuff as a board. No surprises. I've had this conversation with you, Tony Jones, the first week you were here. And I didn't find out that we had this ADA problem of the scope until the staff told me, or actually KGND told us in two-thousand-and-eighteen. So if we don't get good information, the board doesn't operate properly, this has got to get tighter. Somebody's got to work on this, because now we're going to have, I hate to say it, guys, we now are going to have a huge credibility problem in the town when we say a study that costs north of five-hundred-thousand dollars. You can't rely on it, and it's not valid. That's, that's a real problem.
All right, Mr. Kelly, before I turn it over to you, just a couple of things. The COSCOH project, as it was in the master facility plan, is a different scope than what we actually are ending up doing. We are not replacing all of the vents, so the project cost is, is different because it's a different scope. What's in the master facilities plan is guesswork. They didn't go and bid all of these projects out. What we've done with COSCOH is actually done out and gotten a proper bid based on the scope at the time. And I think every one of these projects, that's the way that we basically need to look at it. And that may be the, you know, the, the future model for, for building budgets. Because the master facilities plan gives you a sense of what needs to be done. But again, that's based on scope as if you were doing everything, replacing every nut and bolt, ripping out all of the, you know, all of the duct work, having to repaint, you know, replaster, repaint every classroom. So, so I think we need to just be careful with that. Mr. Kelly, I see your hand.
Thank you. Just to clear things up a little bit, Dan, you didn't make any of these projections, did you?
Projections from, for the KGND master plan? No.
Correct. That is correct, yes.
That's correct. I did not.
Okay, Sean, did you make any of these projections for the master plan?
That would be no, no.
Okay. So nobody here on this, on this Zoom call made any of these incorrect projections. So basically, there was a group hired by the previous board to make these projections. So there seems to be some reprimanding of people on this call who had nothing to do with the incorrect projections that we're talking about. So who could take responsibility for that? Well, the people who hired the crew that, that put the projections together and didn't do them correctly. Do we have to hire another group? Well, that would be unfortunate if we had to spend all that money again. Maybe the previous people who hired the team to put these projections together probably should have done a better job. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Sharon, then we're calling the question.
Dan, were you, were you head of facilities in two-thousand-and-eighteen?
Yes.
When did you join us?
November, I believe.
Of?
I think it was eighteen.
Seventeen, right?
Seventeen, yeah. Maybe you're right.
Okay, so were you on the committee with the rest of us on the master plan?
No. I said, I was not in any committee. But I sat in at some of the meetings.
You sat in on the meetings, right?
Some of the meetings, yeah, some of the meetings.
Right.
I just, I just... I'm quite curious as to where you're going with this, because we're not going to try to be a sign...
No, 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 no. What I'm saying is, Peter, I'm saying something very specific. Look, Joe Kelly made an allegation a minute ago, and I would keep my mouth shut, but I can't. If we don't, we can't rely on our administration when they're administering these projects with people who we hire, and they don't say anything if the information presented to the board is wrong.
Let's wait, let's just, let's, well, hold it, hold it.
Dan, I'm going to stop you, okay? Peter, we're not going to be making accusations against the administration.
Mr. Kelly just made one, so I'm...
He didn't actually make any accusations. He asked if they were involved in this, Peter.
Okay, put it on the members of the board and say the administration had nothing to do with the project.
Okay.
Let's move on.
That's fine. That's what we're going to do. So I'm going to call the question. The motion on the floor is to approve the shift of six-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-five dollars from the North Street HVAC project to cover cybersecurity. So I'm going to take a roll call vote. Bernstein is a yes. Stowe?
Yes.
Hirsch?
Yes.
Downey?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Kowalski?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Share?
Yes.
Great, that passes eight-zero. Thank you very much. We are going to move on now to the monthly financial and staffing report. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to accept the monthly financial and staffing report. Is there a second? Ms. Stowe, thank you. All right, Mr. O'Keefe, take it away.
Thank you. On the operational budget as of December thirty-first, we're at sixty-eight-point-six million dollars year-to-date, which is forty-two percent of our full-year budget of one-sixty-three-point-four. Year-to-year, we're up about six-point-four million, driven primarily by, you know, COVID spend, not yet reimbursed by grants, overall salary increases, a small amount of year-to-year growth in displaced tuition expense realized, and then partly offset by lower summer school and ESY and transportation expenses. Let's see, capital, overall, our available balance is down to twenty-six-point-four million dollars, which is a decrease from the November financial report of two-point-four. We are down about seven-point-two million year-to-year.
Dan, could you hold for a second? Megan, would you mind muting? I think you're unmuted. I think Peter got himself. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, we're down seven-point-two million from the same period a year ago. And just if you isolate the, the year-to-year decline on prior year projects, which is full year sixteen through full year twenty, we're down about fifteen-and-a-half million dollars. So we're continuing to be very aggressively focused on closing out projects from prior... very aggressively focused on closing out projects from prior year. Uh, school lunch, our year to date revenue continues to lag. Uh, we're at six hundred and nine thousand dollars uh year to date December, which is down uh nine hundred and eighty eight thousand from the same period a year ago. Cash sales are down just over a million, a million oh fifty one. Uh, state reimbursements are up fifty eight as realized in the ledger today. However, there's some uh about four hundred and seventy three thousand of reimbursements that have not yet posted related to October, November, so we'll see that number go up fairly significantly. Uh, year to date expense, a million three ninety, and that compares to a million five forty a year ago. So we're, we've got savings in s- some salaries and uh, and then related to the lack of sales, our food costs are significantly lower as well. Uh, partly offsetting that is uh transportation costs related to the uh food delivery. Um, so when you look at where we are through December, um, we, we are clearly uh forecasting that we're gonna miss on revenue. And I'm thinking it's anywhere between one point four and one point six. I put one point six in the, in the, in the chart, but I do think that there's opportunity for additional state reimbursements where we seem to be getting more than uh expected. And uh, and then we're also, uh, Dave Nannarello is also looking to expand uh some sales options uh going forward this year. Expenses, um, we are projecting expenses will run about eight hundred thousand under budget. So when you think, when you consider million four shortfall in revenue in eight hundred uh, eight hundred thousand under budget in expense, we're right now looking at a potential uh net deficit of about six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, I've been talking with other districts. They're all going through the same thing. Uh, Darian is conducting a, an audit of um, uh, or a survey, I should say, of uh peer districts in Fairfield County. Everybody's in the same boat with the uh, with COVID related expenses and uh, and then a COVID related uh drop in uh in food services revenue uh and, and profit. Um, uh, Peter had asked me to just quickly talk about, there's a chart on page five in the package. Uh, it's a contract that is over a hundred thousand dollars. It's called focused on learning. It's for a hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred. Uh, this expense is for a consultant. Uh, the consultant is Todd White, who is very well known uh for providing a teacher and principal evaluation, professional learning, TEPL, T E P L. We've used him uh for many years. As I said, is highly respected and provides of teacher evaluation, administrator evaluation, principal evaluation as well as a training for math interventions. Uh, if you have any more detailed questions about that particular item, Anne is uh probably best equipped to address. I'll stop there. If anybody's got any questions about that one.
Sean, thank you for uh, for answering the question on the consultant. Uh, I just wanted to ask you a question about the, the food services deficit.
Sure.
I guess, is there any, anything we can expect out of the COVID relief funds that might help us close that gap? Especially given it's endemic across the state.
Yeah, um, the, well, as you know, we've received uh, uh, we haven't received the funds yet, but we've applied for the funds. We've been granted uh just shy, shy of two million dollars from Essar round one and the uh, for seven fifty eight and a million two oh four for uh the coronavirus relief fund. We are soon to be expecting an announcement of a second round of Essar funds. And I'm hopeful that it will be more than the seven fifty eight that we received uh earlier this year. So with those funds, uh, I'm anticipating that we could use some of those funds for that purpose.
Were there limitations on the first round that would have prevented us from using them?
Um, well, you know, when we had to commit to how we're gonna spend the um, the first round of Essar uh, equipment was an area uh, that was one of the choices and we had spent just about seven hundred and fifty eight thousand in, in equipment. So we opted to budget that amount for equipment. Um, knowing that the uh, the coronavirus relief fund, who, which was coming out shortly thereafter, was more driven by P P E type of expenses. So that's how we, that's how we, we budgeted the mon- the money between uh Essar round one and C R F. And obviously, you know, if the actuals come in differently, we can rebudget those numbers with a request to the state. As far as the Essar round two, you know, we don't know the details yet, but uh, we are expecting that the amount uh may be higher than the first round.
Okay, all right. I'm not seeing any other hands. So we'll go ahead and call the question. Uh, this is to accept the monthly financial and staffing report. Bernstein is a yes. Stowe.
Yes.
Hirsch.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
And Share.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, uh, we had a budget transfer item on here. Uh, you know, sort of the, the safety belt, the belt suspenders. We do not have any budget transfers, so I'm gonna make a motion to table this item until we have uh an actual transfer. Is there a second to uh table this item?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Hirsch. And to quick roll call, Bernstein's a yes. Stowe.
Yes.
Hirsch.
Yes.
Downey. Christina. Okay, I think we've lost Christina or her headphones died. Uh, Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
And Share. That puts us in, Peter.
Yes.
Thank you. So that's a seven zero to table. Thank you. All right, uh, just last.
I'm back. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I dropped for some reason. It dropped. I'm back and.
No, we're just, uh, vote on table.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Eight zero. All right, just agenda planning very, very quickly. Um, so we'll put policy on the agenda for February and you'll let us know what you've got. Uh, strategic plan will take off February and put to March. Uh, we're gonna move the course of study, guys, to action. Uh, Peter, your request for Rachel Ball's table, we'll talk to Tony about what, uh, how best to get that to the board. Uh, and then we'll look at when to uh reschedule A O P. Uh, one other item, O G. Uh, we were waiting for the document to be reformatted. That was one of the requests we had. Uh, so I tentatively got that for February. If the document's ready, if not, that'll go to March. Uh, and then the board is also meeting an executive session uh next week uh to talk about special education out of district placement. Um, so just uh board members, remember you've got that on Thursday. Anything else for agenda planning?
Uh, is it possible to add to, I don't know if we have time with our retreat next week for special education, but to add how we're going to deal with the ADA issues that are in our district?
Well, I'm not sure that that would be for executive session. Um, given the COVID era, it's a little bit hard to do uh, to do a meeting and then go to another meeting, but uh, but noted and we'll try to see if we can't figure out when to take that up. I know the superintendent said on the front end, they're putting together an inventory, so maybe we, we'd be best suited to uh have that in hand for that discussion.
Sure, I just, that's why I objected to the agenda today. For some reason, I thought we were having, w- we had talked about putting this on the agenda at our last meeting and it wasn't. And so I just, I think it's an action item. But forgive the phrase. I think it's an item for which deserves a robust discussion quickly.
Yeah, well, I'd like to have some of that information in hand, but I, I think that makes sense. All right, with that, Mr. Kelly, I believe you have a motion you'd like to make.
I do. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
And I'm gonna happily second that and we'll do a lightning round Bernstein. Yes, Stowe.
Yes.
Hirsch.
Yes.
Downey.
Yes.
Kelly.
Yes.
Kowalski.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
And Share.
Yep.
Thank you very much. We are adjourned. Thank you to the ten people that made it all the way to the end. I don't know how many of you are paid employees, but we appreciate your sticking with us. Good night, everybody.
All right.